Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular city council meeting of December 12th, 2022. Happy holidays in advance, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Go ahead and open the meeting, as I said, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Captain Landon to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Jennifer, will you please call roll call?
Councilmember Boge?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Here.
Mayor Protam Beaver?
Here.
Mayor Avila?
Okay, I think this is the time for public comment. Okay, very good. Yeah, this is a time for public comment, and we have speaker slips at the door there. You have three minutes to speak. You can speak on any item that's not on the agenda this evening. Right now, we have three, four, five speakers. You'll get three minutes per person, and we'll go ahead and start with the first speaker, Terri Boone.
Hello, I'm Terri Boone, 9794 Ukeipa Ridge Road. When I was canvassing two months ago, I found that this city is even more beautiful than I had thought: small family homes and large rural properties with pride of ownership. These residential and rural properties are not for income properties like apartment complexes and commercial wineries. I understand that Measure EE passed, which is a referendum on the fact that Sacramento does not represent San Bernardino County people, and therefore, I expect serious pushback and no yellow-bellied cowards or puppets of their donors on this council. I also want to say that I am vehemently against a Ukeipa Police Department instead of contracting with the San Bernardino County Sheriff Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Richard Frost.
Yes, the Daily Caller website says that the United States has a coyote problem. They had those two little girls who were dragged away by those coyotes, but, I mean, they didn't get them very far. Their parents were there. And a lot of coyotes being displaced, mountain lions, too. And I talked to somebody that saw a couple of big coyotes walking down Third Street, and I saw a baby coyote walking by the library. They're very shy around people, but for small children and small animals, they're very dangerous. And they have been displaced, but there must be some way to move them out of urban areas. And speaking of coyotes, there's this mountain lion in the Hollywood Hills, and it attacked a chihuahua that was on a leash and killed the chihuahua, and then attacked another chihuahua in Silver Lake, but the owner kept kicking the mountain lion, so he let the chihuahua go. But, I mean, they're even attacking animals which owners have on a leash. And so anyways, a lot of people talk about that and kind of thing, but they say, well, they've been displaced, but they're dangerous in urban areas, so, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Next speaker, Craig Heaps.
I'll make it quick. I just wanted to, Craig Heaps, 3425-9, Beal Winter Drive, Ukeipa. I had something on the agenda I wanted to talk about, but I got the answer, but I did want to, Councilmember Boge, Mayor Avila, we appreciate your help. We appreciate all you did for us, and thank you very much. And congratulations to the new councilman, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Rob Richmond.
Good evening. I'm here to introduce myself to the city council and say a few words about the Trails Committee. I've been a resident of Ukeipa for 16 years, and I've been serving on the Trails and Open Space Committee for six years. And I'd like to say this is a truly great committee, which has made many important contributions in Ukeipa. We have hundreds of hikers who take our monthly hikes, as well as bikers who use our new biking trail, and we're fortunate to have had long-term committed volunteer, volunteers who care and work with the city to make it all possible. I'm here to volunteer to serve another term. I'm also a long-term member with the Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy, and I'm the designated liaison between the two committees. I'm currently coordinator for the city's Adopt a Trail program, and I've been active in the hiking aspects of the committee. I'm thankful for the opportunity I've had to serve on the Trails Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Henson Wang.
Oh, okay, thank you. Misplaced here. Our final speaker is Beth Ann Kynan.
I just want to say thank you for the candy canes. Who doesn't love candy canes? I don't know who was behind the candy canes. Oh, thank you. I don't know who was behind the candy canes up on the first turnaround, but when I was driving up to the women's club, I saw it, and I just about danced in my heart because this was beautiful, it was big, it was exciting, and it was refreshing to see. And I just want to say thank you to who's ever behind that. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more comments here for public comment. Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We're moving on to the ceremonial portion of our agenda. This is to recognize Councilmember...
Mr. Mayor, you have consent as well.
Oh, you know what? Thank you so much. I always screw it up. There's going to be something I drop. All right. Are there any items on the consent agenda anyone on the dais wishes to pull for discussion? Hearing none?
I'll move approval on the consent agenda.
I'll second. We have a first and a second. If no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes carry it. Now, we go on to the ceremonial portion of our agenda. This is the outgoing recognition of Councilmember Boge and myself. Yes, sir. Item two. What am I missing here?
Oh, no. That was part of consent. I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry. You're on the right track.
Folks, I'm reading off a script. I don't have my computer with me, so...
That one was my bad, so...
We're going to slip and fall here until I'm off the dais. All right. So we're talking again about the outgoing of Councilmember Boge and myself. Before we go with the ceremony, Greg, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I didn't come with anything prepared. I was contemplating on what I could say to try to wrap up 12 years, and it just doesn't work. That's it.
And I would just like to say thank you for your service to the city of Ukeipa. Unfortunately, I am never without words. I will say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community, even for just the short eight years. Hopefully, I've done some good. I know I've tripped up, but it's never been with malice or ill intent. I have nothing to gain, and I had nothing to gain, by being a public servant. It's been an honor to serve you, and I have some wonderful new friends, both as city staff and out in the public. And while we often disagreed, we, as a city council, have always done the best to move our city in the right direction. In the last four years, there's been some major changes in our government today at the dais, and it scares people, because nobody likes radical changes such as we have right now. But I'm going to quote Thomas Jefferson here, and it pertains to the city of Ukeipa. "The good sense of people will always be found to be the best army. They may be led astray for a moment, but will soon correct themselves. It is your job as citizens of Ukeipa to make sure that we go in the direction that you want it to go." And with God's blessing, our community will continue to flourish and thrive and become one of the most envied communities in the inland empire. Thank you for letting me serve you. It's been my honor.
I think you have some proclamations if you wish to read them.
Proclamation honoring and thanking Councilmember David Avila for his service to the city of Ukeipa. Whereas David Avila grew up in Orange County, California, and later attended Crafton Hills College, where he graduated with an associate's degree in fire technology and public and protective services. He also graduated with an associate's degree in history from Fullerton College and with a bachelor of arts degree in liberal studies pre-law from Cal State University Fullerton. And whereas after graduation, David joined Cal Fire and served as a firefighter and company officer in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. It was CDF, wasn't it?
Cal Fire, CDF.
Whereas David retired as a battalion fire chief in Riverside County after 32 years of career service. And whereas David has resided in the city of Ukeipa for over 30 years, he raised his family here and became an active member of the community. And whereas on November 4th, 2014, the residents of Ukeipa elected David Avila to the Ukeipa City Council. He was re-elected on November 6th, 2018, and during his tenure, David actively served his community on numerous local and regional committees, which include the Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy, the city of Ukeipa's Casa Blanca House Advisory Committee, Finance Committee, Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee, Housing Authority, Successor Agency, Vector Control Committee, and Ukeipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee. He has also served on the Southern California Association of Governments and the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Omnitrans. Whereas David, during his years of service to the community, has also volunteered with the Boy Scouts of America, Crafton Hills College Foundation, Knights of Columbus, Past Pleasures Car Club, Rotary Club of Ukeipa, Ukeipa Chamber of Commerce, Ukeipa Historical Society, and Ukeipa Valley Youth Soccer Association. And whereas David's years of service have been marked by his ethical, honest, and transparent dedication to the absolute best interests of the community, as well as his overall contributions to creating a sustainable, fiscally responsible, and well-planned community. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Ukeipa, and on behalf of all of our citizens, does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to David Avila for his distinguished service to the community, and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities over the last eight years. Signed, Ukeipa City Council.
Thank you. That's all I can say right now.
Proclamation honoring and thanking Councilmember Greg Boge for his service to the city of Ukeipa. Whereas Greg Boge grew up in San Bernardino and graduated from San Bernardino High School, San Bernardino Valley College, and Cal State University San Bernardino. He received his Associate of Arts degree in liberal arts from San Bernardino Valley College, and earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in finance from California State University San Bernardino. And whereas after graduation, Greg became a social studies teacher in San Bernardino City Unified School District's Golden Valley Middle School. And whereas after teaching for a period of time, Greg decided to work for his family's construction business, which afforded him the time to be more involved in the community. And whereas Greg has resided in the city of Ukeipa for over 20 years, he has raised his family here and has become an integral member of the community. And whereas on November 2nd, 2010, the residents of Ukeipa elected Greg Boge to the city council, he was re-elected on November 4th, 2014, and appointed on November 6th, 2018. During his tenure, Greg actively served his community on numerous local and regional committees, which include the Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy, city of Ukeipa's City Public Facilities Needs Assessment Ad Hoc Committee, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee, Finance Committee, Housing Authority, Redevelopment Agency, Solid Waste Committee, Solid Waste Advisory Task Force, Successor Agency, Vector Control Committee, Music and Arts Festival Committee, Music and Arts Festival Planning Ad Hoc Committee, Performing Arts Center Council Ad Hoc Committee, Performing Arts Center Entertainment Committee, Youth Advisory Committee. He has also served on the AB 2443 Ad Hoc Committee, City of Calamasa Ad Hoc Committee, as the League of California Cities Legislative Delegate, San Bernardino Association of Governments, Ukeipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District Ad Hoc Council Committee, Ukeipa Valley Chamber of Commerce Ad Hoc Committee, Ukeipa Valley Water District Ad Hoc Council Committee, Ukeipa Valley Water District and General Water Issues Council Committee. And whereas Greg has served the city with an ethical, honest, and transparent approach to public service and a dedication to leading by example, which has been not only to his credit, but the benefit of the city of Ukeipa. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Ukeipa, and on behalf of all of our citizens, does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Greg Boge for his distinguished service to the community, and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities over the last 12 years. Signed, Ukeipa City Council.
Mr. Mayor, may I, on behalf of staff, just say how much city staff appreciates, and we wish to express our leadership, our appreciation for your leadership, both Mayor Avila and Councilmember Boge, your support over the years, your vision. You'll see a little bit of that today in a couple of items on the agenda, but those attributes and so many others have led to so much being accomplished during your tenure. And again, on behalf of staff, we want to express our appreciation for all those things.
You know, I didn't say anything before, but I think I'm going to say something now. I want to start off by thanking, actually, you guys. I'm getting choked up today. I wish I wasn't, but you guys, Ray, Dave, Jennifer, Vermeen, Megan, everyone on the city staff is incredible, and I see it. We've accomplished so much over those last 12 years. I think of the Uptown redevelopment, and I think of, you know, the business opportunities, I think of the soccer complex and things of that nature. You guys do all the heavy lifting. We just make the decisions. It's you guys. You know, I remember we started the Music and Arts Festival to celebrate what we did in the Uptown, and I remember just staying after hours, and I could see the city staff coming in. I could see Megan. Megan was out there, you know, picking up trash and Paul, and it's you guys that do all the work. It's, we're just up here making the decisions on how to spend the money, I guess. But it's really you guys, and I think you guys put together an amazing team. Just look at Ukeipa. You know, I was asked, when I vividly remember, I was in the senior center, my son, who's sitting back here, who's 16 years old, he was, I think, three, he was on my shoulders, and someone asked me, how will you know to be a good councilman? How will you know if you were a good council member? And I said, oh, it's really simple. If my kids want to live here. It's not about me. It's about the future. It's about whether your kids want to live here. And so, that's really is what has guided me over the years. So with that, thank you. Thank you for all your work. You guys really put in all the effort. It's you guys that are awesome. We just, we just ride the wave, I guess. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Boge, I just want to thank you both personally for your years of service. It's been an honor serving up here with you.
Thank you so much.
I look up to both of you. I think the character it takes to step into a position and then continue to seek reelection on, for a position that is, it's not easy. Sometimes the decisions are difficult, and after the first term, you've sought out to do that again. And I've said it time and time again to people around the community and even in my professional life, don't complain about a problem unless you're willing to address it. And both of you have stepped up to the plate time and time again to address problems and to make the city a community that your children want to live in and feel safe in. So for that and your leadership, thank you. Hats off to you. Well done.
So I remember in 2010, I threw my name in the hat to run for city council, and I didn't realize that Greg Boge was going to be running against me at the time. And I ran against Greg, and I remember going to the old church up on Bryant, and they were having, the tea party was having a forum, and I remember sitting there with Greg, and that's when I met Greg for the first time. And I really liked Greg, and we had a good, we had a good relationship there. And I remember Tom Masner, who was running against Greg and against me, and Tom Masner said to the audience, he said, "If you want to do me a favor, vote for these guys." And I was sitting there thinking, what kind of crap is that? Why would you do that? And as it turned out, Greg and I had a pretty good, and his family had a pretty good relationship for a number of years, and Greg won, and Tom Masner won then. And then, over the years, I've worked with Greg for 10 years. He's been here 12. I've been here 10, and we've had, we've made a lot of decisions together. We've had good times and bad times, but all in all, I respect Greg and I appreciate Greg, and I think Greg has done a fantastic job. And then I remember David Avila, he beat my friend Tom Masner in 2014. I was hoping he didn't win that election, because I was supporting Tom, and I put more work into Tom's campaign than Tom did himself. And then David Avila beat him by 75 votes, and I couldn't believe it. I thought, crap, how'd he do that? But he worked real hard, he did a good job, and then I worked real hard in 2018 to get, to help get David re-elected in 2018. And once again, he and I have worked together for eight years, and had a lot of decisions we've made together, we've agreed, we've disagreed. But all in all, he's a good guy, he's made a lot of great decisions, he's done a good job. Both of them have done a fantastic job for the city, and the city's going to miss them. But when Dick Riddell got beat by John Thorpe, everybody thought the city couldn't survive without Dick Riddell up here, and sure enough, it has, and it will. And the bottom line is, I just appreciate all they've done.
I think we have several presenters. Senator Rosalie C. Boge? Joel Boge, I'm sorry. Certainly may, or you can wait till she reads that long proclamation.
Actually, this one is a short one. The actual resolutions are coming in, so we didn't get them in time for today, so we just have something temporary on that. But I just want to, I'm going to give more of a personal... I'm going to begin with Mayor David Avila. I'm here on behalf of the California State Legislature, more specifically, the state senate, as representative for this area for the past two years. It's been an honor to serve at this council. But on more and a more personal level, I just want to commend the honorable, graceful, and dignified manner in which Mayor Avila has served, both as a council member and as a mayor to the city. Thank you so much for the work that you have so dignified, in such a dignified manner, served the city. It's been an honor to have you represent my city, which I call Ukeipa my home, and we have for the past 20 years, and it's been a true honor to know you and your wife, because I know that as a council member and as a mayor, you cannot do that job without your beautiful wife next to you. So on that hand, I would like to also recognize Ellen, and I know I saw her here somewhere, who does double duty as well as representing the Chamber of Commerce and has done an amazing job on that front as well. So it's a team serving the, this city. It is a team effort. So on behalf of the California State Legislature, thank you so much for your service, Mayor Avila, and thank you for the manner in which you have served with such a level of decorum that really merits the office that you hold. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We could take the picture all together and invite Supervisor Rile down, or you could take the picture separately now? It's up to you.
I'll follow whoever's lead. Someone...
Just, we'll let her, should we let her go, and then we'll go down?
Okay, sure.
I'm sorry. Another resolution? My mistake.
No, that's okay. We have one for Greg as well. Do you want to just wait for Greg?
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
First, or do you want to take it all at once?
Please, please do, yeah.
Okay. So this is a unique position that I'm in this afternoon or this evening. Also, on behalf of the California State Legislature, the California Senate, and specifically, I'm here to also recognize council member and former mayor of the city, Greg Boge, who happens to be my husband.
We don't cry this much at home.
But I just wanted to thank him, because I've worked with this council again for the past two years with them, and the capacity of council members, but also, I just want to share with everyone the insight, knowledge, and perspective of my husband serving at the city council. He has done it with so much love for the city, has done it very gracefully, has been so committed to this position as council member and mayor. so committed to this position as council member and mayor. And for those of you that did not have the opportunity to serve with him, he is the man who spent the weekends reading the agenda, discussing the issues, researching, making sure that he was prepared for the council meeting on Monday. He was also the gentleman who would receive phone calls or emails, which he would personally respond to, visit the constituents who had any of the concerns to try to address the issues in person. And any call that he would receive from any constituent concerned, he would directly and reach out to the staff to talk about how to fix that. And always did it with the constituent at hand first, bureaucracy second. His dedication was unmatched. Always did it selfless, never with an agenda, never with a sense of personal benefit in mind, but always looking to see at the issue at hand and what was best for the city and for the constituent in the most respectful and honorable way. And it's hard to find people in this time and day who do things in governance in a selfless manner, not with their benefit in mind, but with, but with the state of space that they, that they serve with that honor. So it is with great honor. And I recognize you today and I commend your work with heart and passion and dedication to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last comment. Thank you for being an example to our children about civic service.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Ellen?
Come on, sweetie.
Come on up.
Do you want a picture, Ellen? And then send it to her.
Next, Mr. Mayor, next we have Third District Supervisor and Vice Chair, Don Ral.
Good evening. It is an honor to be here today to recognize two fine gentlemen and public servants. Thank you for your example of leadership in our community. Mr. Mayor, it's been an honor to serve with you on various committees, to the region as a whole. Sometimes I feel like we in the East Valley are the redheaded stepchild of the greater area. And you've done a fantastic job of advocating alongside of me for our interests down here in the East Valley. So thank you for that. Councilmember Bog, it's been a pleasure and a joy to work with you also. I know we haven't interfaced as much on some of those committees, but the way you've represented your city to the constituents and how you've brought the spirit of Youcaipa to me and what I have learned through you on the residents and what's important to them, I value and treasure that. We, my, my time on the city council, you don't get to go out to dinner with your family and just enjoy a quiet evening. It's always someone stopping by to say hi, who by the way, has a pothole or some other issue. And it's typically an issue may not even, you know, be within the city jurisdiction, a water issue, a county issue. And so you're elected to really be the face of those local residents that need help. And so, we know and recognize the service and the sacrifice in Ellen and Senator. It's, it's an awful lot for the families too. And so, thank you for setting that example for our, our residents and for doing such a fine job. It is an honor to be here tonight on behalf of the entire County Board of Supervisors to present you proclamations in honoring your service. So thank you.
And finally, on behalf of Congressman Obertnolte, Pio Sheen, who will present something this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Avila and Councilmember Greg Bog. I have double duty tonight as a city employee, but also as a field representative for Congressman Jay Obertnolte. Tonight, he wanted to send his regards in not being able to participate in the ceremony, but he also wanted to send his best wishes. Thank you both for your years of service, your hard work and dedication, your constant strive to improve the quality of life here in the city of Youcaipa. So I have two certificates of recognition, one for Mayor David Avila and for Greg Bog, Councilmember Greg Bog. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for us. I think the next step now will be, do I get to, do I step away now, or do we?
We, yeah. Sorry.
We're gonna step away now. Thank you, Youcaipa. Everyone have a wonderful, wonderful life.
Ready for the swearing in, Mayor Pro Tem?
We are.
If the other council members would like to join us up front, Chris and Matt, Councilmember Venable, Councilmember Matt Garner, come on to the front.
Absolutely, yes. Please raise your right hand. Aye. State your name. And then repeat after me. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties about, upon which I'm about to enter. Upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Where are they going?
Gotta draw my map.
You guys are going the wrong way.
Your seats are up here now.
Grab a seat. We're gonna, we'll take a recess here in a second.
Yeah, we can remove the plaques for now and then we'll move the others around if, after closed session, if council wishes to approve a change to the agenda. So first item is the election of officers. Happy to, you wanna?
Can we do that? All right. Jennifer Crawford.
Okay, so pursuant to Resolution Number 202112, in years in which a general municipal election is scheduled, the selection of mayor and mayor pro tem shall be conducted no later than the first regular meeting in December. Nominations for the office of mayor and mayor pro tem may be made by any member of the council and need not be seconded in order to be effective. Once you put in nominations, following those nominations, I will read back each nomination and call for a vote. Selection shall be by three or more affirmative votes. Also, a council member, well, doesn't really apply because it's not successive term. At this time, I will now open the nominations for the office of mayor.
I nominate Justin Beaver.
I'd like to make a nomination and make Duncan mayor.
I don't, I don't wish to be the mayor. I want to nominate Justin Beaver.
Okay, so right now I have one nomination for Beaver. Thorpe nominated Duncan.
I think I beat him, didn't I?
Not yet. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Beaver. Justin.
Okay, so let's just go with nominations for the office of mayor now closed. At this time, I will read back the nomination for Beaver to be mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, same now is true for mayor pro tem. I will open the nominations for mayor pro tem.
I'll nominate Bob Duncan.
Seconded.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All those in favor for Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Five zero. Congratulations. Hey, Ray.
Mr. City Manager, is there any changes to the agenda this evening? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff would respectfully request that council consider moving the closed session item to the next item. We would anticipate a relatively short closed session, but staff would recommend that we move the closed session item to next on the agenda. Okay. Have a motion.
I'll, I'll second, or I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes carry. At this time, we will take a recess so we can take our closed session agenda item now. If you folks want to hang tight with us, we'll be back in, I don't know, a few minutes after we do our closed session agenda items. And the city attorney...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and read the closed session description. It's a threat to public services or facilities under Government Code Sections 54957A. Consultation with the city attorney and the city manager. There's one matter to be discussed and we do not expect reportable action on that item this evening.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Actually, I feel like I'm in a hole, dude.
Yes, good.
You guys need to get me a booster chair.
I'll do that next time. Thanks.
All right, we'll reconvene the regular city council meeting of December twelfth. And we're going on to item number four. Twenty twenty-three membership on council committees, regional organization, and ad hoc committees. This is Jennifer Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this is a membership on council committees, regional orgs, and ad hocs. Exhibit A in your packet, which is page twenty-seven to twenty-nine, and on the screen before you identifies the various committees, regional orgs, and ad hoc committees. City staff has reviewed the list of committees and these organizations, and we are seeking direction on some of the following based on your consideration. The ones that we'd like further input from you are highlighted in red, and new committees would be highlighted in blue. But just to give you a little bit of background on some of these committee, one is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee. This committee was formed in two thousand eleven. The intent of the committee was to advise on the prep, preparation of a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report, which was a prereq for the city of Ucaipa to apply for an economic adjustment assistant grant. Ucaipa did receive approximately one million dollars in grant funding for infrastructure improvements to support Sorenson Engineering expansion, which ultimately resulted in them staying in town and expanding from a hundred and twenty-five employees to over five hundred employees. However, this committee has not met since two thousand fourteen, and as a result, there may be no remaining issues for this committee. The next committee we'd like you to give us direction on is EDAC, which was formed in nineteen ninety-four. EDAC serves in a advisory capacity to the city council, and in the past has played a role in shaping city policy and procedure. Over the years, however, the focus and overall continual development of goals and strategies of the committee has diminished and may require some revitalization to ensure input is provided that can enhance the economic future of the city. Staff recommends that you review the feasibility of maintaining this committee and the current structure and overall composition. The next committee we'd like you to think about is the Small Business Incubator Selection Committee. This committee was formed in two thousand fifteen, and the intent of the committee was to provide oversight and support the Business Incubator Center Program, which offered low-cost space rent for approved startup companies, including the business resources needed to foster their growth. The incubator center property is now under an agreement to be sold for development. Small business support for the incubator tenants will continue through an MOU in partnership with the Inland Empire Small Business Development Center. Staff recommends absolving the committee considering the sale of the property. Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee was formed in two thousand nineteen. The intent of this committee is to support the development of a citywide planning tool that would address the land use elements that are not currently provided within the Development Code to support the implementation of an AVA. The committee has completed their efforts to prepare and recommended draft specific plan based on council feedback, which will be presented to council in the future. As a result, there may be no remaining issues for the committee to review. Two new committees that we're recommending that you consider. One is the Library Design Review Ad hoc Committee. Over the past twenty years, the city has actively engaged the community regarding the need for, prioritization of, location of, and design of public facilities and parks to be funded, designed, and constructed in Ucaipa. The completion of the community center, city hall, police department, fire station, Y-PAC, and a number of parks have been designed by said ad hoc committees. Council has prioritized the community education library as the next critical public facility, and recently, the city was awarded a nine million dollar grant from the state to partially fund the new library in the city. In an effort to complete discussions and build that partnership with our local partners, which is the school district and the county of San Bernardino, we're requesting that the council consider establishing a library design ad hoc committee to include the participation of one council member and designate an alternate, and then there will be a representative from the school district and one from the third district. The remaining committee is the Public Finance Authority Board. On November twenty, twenty twenty-two, council approved the establishment of the Ucaipa Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, known as the EIFD. It is a special district with defined boundaries that uses increment finance tool, property taxes to issue bonds to fund infrastructure projects or affordable housing. Council approved a resolution of intent to begin the next steps of the EIFD process, including the establishment of the Public Financing Authority to serve as the government board of the EIFD. PFA membership may include one public member and one member of the county board of supervisors, and recruitment for the public member will take place in January two thousand twenty-three, following public notice. Staff recommends that the council choose two of its members and one alternate member to serve on the committee. So staff recommends that council review the list of committees and regional organization and head off committees and revise as appropriate the two, the two thousand twenty-three list. And so for ease on the screen, and as I hand out to you this evening, we, we can go down the row. We can tell you right now, as of this evening, the current membership is in column C. And then what we're seeking direction on, you to let us know if you want to keep the committee or change up the structure of the committees highlighted in red, and those are the ones I just went through, and who would like to serve for the two thousand twenty-three year.
Okay, any questions of staff? So just take it one at a time, start at the top. Okay. Who would like to be on the Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee?
Are we gonna decide to keep those? Are we gonna decide not to have those? Are we gonna do that first, or no?
You can do that first, or you can go with the committees that are in black, and then we could readdress, or you can tell us right now if you want to dissolve those committees.
So let's take it one at a time. We'll start with the top, as we get to the, if it's a one we're considering, then we'll address it there. So since it is the Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee, do you have a desire to see it continue, or?
I have, we've, we've gone through every one of the points. We've met for two and a half years. We've gotten input from everyone on the committee at different times. I think we need to just eliminate that and let it go back to staff and, and placeworks, and let them just sort of hammer it out, and then bring it back to planning and the council, and let us decide what we want to do. So I think we should get rid of it.
So would that require a motion, a second, and a full vote to dissolve a committee? Okay, so then we have a motion on the table to dissolve the Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes carry. Casablanca House Advisory Committee. I would like to volunteer to be on this committee. And so we'll need an alternate, Mr. Duncan, or Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, you are currently an alternate. Do you want to remain?
Yes.
Do you want to motion in a second?
All right. So as of right now, it's, I would like to be the primary member with Mayor Pro Tem Duncan as an alternate. Do I have a motion?
That could be the motion if you'd like.
Oh, all right, there's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries. Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee hasn't met since two thousand fourteen, so I will motion that we dissolve that committee. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries. Okay, Economic Development Advisory Committee.
So we had, at our last EDAC meeting, we had a conversation with everyone about that group not really doing what it was initially planned to do. And I, the last two meetings, we've had conversations about trying to get it back on track, but I think we should dissolve that one as well.
I think the Economic Development Advisory Committee is an important committee to have. I would like to see it exist. However, I do believe that restructuring is in order. Raise our way, we can vote to have that maybe taken back before staff and rework the wording in the resolution. I don't want to close off conduits of communication between us and the community as it relates to economic development. I think it is an important aspect of our community. But I believe we've maybe lost sight for that advisory committee as it currently stands, and it may need some restructuring. So should that be the vote, or does that, does that need a vote at this point to amend?
You could take that vote now, or you could provide just a little more input to staff relative to a potential structure for that committee. Right now, it's kind of, it's been a continuing committee without expiration dates for membership. It's based on a representative from the water district and from the school district, et cetera. You may want to give staff some input relative to any suggestions relative to that structure.
So these are public meetings, open to the public. There's certainly representatives from all stakeholders in the community are welcome to these. I believe the, if this was the Justin Show, we'd have a councilman appointed member on the EDAC, and maybe a number of, some at-large positions based on needs with, with the rotating, I think most of our advisory committees have rotating with, are an expiration of maybe two-year, a two-year term.
And most of your committees also have an appointee made by an individual council member as well, in addition to the at-large members, and that may be something you want to consider as well, so.
I would certainly support something like that coming before council.
Is that concurrence on the, kind of the idea for the structure, and we can bring that, that back to council with more information?
I'm not opposed to having EDAC. I just, I think we've lost our way, or the committee's lost its way. And we've tried to bring it back on, on point, but not been successful in doing that. But now Ryan Miller is working with us, and I think he can maybe help us get it back on track, but I'm not opposed to that.
Does that sound reasonable, then? We'll bring that back with the structure of each council member appointing a member, and maybe two at-large members, and we'll bring back some language for the creation of, the recreation of the EDAC. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Finance Committee. I'm confident that Councilmember Venable probably would like to do that.
Absolutely, I would do that.
I'm, I'm also confident that city staff will be happy to have me not on there, and delaying their check run reviews every week.
So you're wanting off?
I would like to be off that, that committee.
I'll stay on.
Okay.
I'd like to stay on.
So, okay, so Councilmember Venable with Councilmember Thorpe, and I'm willing to be the alternate, should the need arise. So.
So a motion and a second?
The motion, is there a second? Mr. Venable, or Councilmember Venable seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Healthy Ucaipa Committee. Would you like to remain as the?
Sure.
Member? I'll be the alternate, or I'll volunteer to be the alternate on the Healthy Ucaipa Committee.
I was talking, so, sorry.
No, not at all. Mayor Pro Tem Duncan is, there's been a motion that he remain the committee member for the Healthy Ucaipa Committee, and I volunteer to be the alternate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Public Finance Authority Board for the EIFD. This, I think, this topic has come before council, I think, two times that I can recall. It is something that is, it's generally a pretty lengthy staff report and discussion had, so I certainly think, see the benefit for having a, a committee to review these items prior to city council meetings. Any thoughts on the matter? Mr. Garner?
No. Did he say no?
I believe he did.
I'll, I'll circle on that one.
All right, so Mayor Pro Tem Duncan as member number one.
I'll do it.
And Councilman Thorpe is member number two. And I'll volunteer to be the alternate. So the motion is on the board. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Solid Waste Committee.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on that.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Duncan. I'll volunteer to be on the Solid Waste Committee. Motion is on the board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vector Control Committee.
I'll sit on that one.
Are we still, are we still meeting? Are we still doing that, vector control?
We are. We, we haven't had a whole lot of meetings. Knock on wood, we've had some pretty good results in the last year or so, so we haven't needed as many meetings.
I think there's a, I think the last meeting that I attended for the vector control, the conversation is, seems to be shifting from flies to other vector in the community, so. Certainly there, but I think Ucaipa's lost its air force by and large. It's not nearly as bad as it was twenty years ago, I recall, and I think the, the cageless chicken facilities seems to have facilitated the natural disposal of vermin with the chicken droppings. Chickens like to eat what shows up there, so. So I actually wouldn't mind remaining on the vector control as well. So with the council member Venable and myself, is the motion, unless you're hearing anything else, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Youth Advisory Committee.
That's a good one for Chris Venable. He was a baseball coach.
I'll sit on that one.
Baseball coach as well, yeah. And how about, how about Councilman Garner?
I'll sit on that one.
All right, the motion is on the, on the board, and I will second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Who gave the motion on that?
I, I motioned, ma'am.
And who did the second? I thought you did the second.
I think, I think Matt's volunteering might have been the first.
He was, he was the motion, I was the second. I apologize. Five Winds Ranch Improvement Advisory Committee. Councilman Thorpe, you're currently on that. Would you like to remain?
That's fine.
Okay. Want to be on that?
I, I'd do that, sure.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan?
That sounds like a lot of fun, actually.
Very nice venue. Excited to see it build out. All right, so we'll call Mayor Pro Tem Duncan's the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy. Councilman Thorpe, would you like to remain on that?
No, I'll give it to somebody else.
I'll, I'll volunteer for that one. I think conservancy is important. I'd like to do that. Would you like to remain the alternate?
I'll sit on that one.
You didn't jump on it.
Councilman Venable? So there is a, looks like there's a motion, at least on the board, for, from Councilman Venable. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Omni Trans, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
I'd like to do that, yes.
And.
I'll be the alternate.
There we go. So my, that'll be my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. SBC TA, I'd also like to nominate Mayor Protem Duncan for that position as well.
Yeah, I'd like to sit on that one. That Garner could be the alternate.
I can do it.
Understood?
I'll be the alternate.
I'll make a motion that we accept that, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those, or any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is the Muni Water District, are they still, the advisory, they still meeting? I haven't gotten a notice on that in a long time.
Actually, that's a good point. I'm not sure that, that is meeting in that, in that structure anymore. I think they're doing outreach meetings as opposed to that structure, Mayor Protem Duncan. So perhaps that's one that we reschedule, that we reorient. But I think there's still a need for participation. I just think that the structure is different. They don't call it that committee any longer.
So do you want to move on this item, or do you want to wait until?
We could move on the item and, and come back to you with the, the new title, but I think there should be a representative if council so chooses.
I've been doing that.
I'll motion that it remains as is with Mayor Protem Duncan and Councilman Thorpe.
I'm good with that.
Is that your second?
That's my second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Solid Waste Advisory Task Force. How often do they meet?
Like, a couple times, like, once a month, or sometimes they push it off. But I've been pretty much attending on behalf of council.
I will volunteer to be on that task force.
Volunteer who?
Myself.
What's a task force do? Go around checking trash cans?
It's gonna be awesome, I'm gonna wear a raid vest. Awesome task force.
That meets at 1:30 in the afternoon?
I'll make it work, yeah. So, all right, so the, is there a motion to accept myself as the member?
Would you like me to stay as the alternate?
Yes, ma'am. If that is amenable to you.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, on this one, they're still allowing Zoom calls for attendance, if that enters into the conversation at all.
I'll do that.
Mayor Protem Duncan? I'll second his motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did, does CH, the Craftos College Ad Hoc Committee meet? I don't think I've had one meeting since I've been on the.
We haven't had a lot of those meetings since most of those agreements have kind of been cemented in place and, and extended over time. So we haven't had a lot of ad hoc meetings.
Okay, I can remain as the primary member.
I'll be an alternate.
Councilman Venable as an alternate?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City of Cala Mesa Ad Hoc Council Committee. Councilman Thorpe, you're on that currently, do you want to, would you like to remain?
That's fine.
Councilman Garner, would you like to be the primary member with Councilman Thorpe?
Sure.
I'll be the alternative.
So we'll use one of them as a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Library Design Review Ad Hoc Committee.
I would be interested, but I kind of need to kind of know a little bit on the schedule for that. Do we have a timeframe with that, when they would be meeting?
So, if I may, one other issue as well is, we're likely, if it's a three-agency partnership, as we are working toward, we're likely to have a, one member from the county board, one member, or designate one member from the school board, and one member from the city council, with perhaps an alternate. We anticipate having the committee meet maybe a couple times a month, especially early on in the process. There will be a staff level coordination effort that goes on more often than that, but perhaps a couple of times a month. And we can work around the council member that has selected their schedule to the best of our abilities, late, late afternoon, early evening even, if we need to.
Is this going to be an expansion of the existing library? Are we going to be a ground-up construction?
It's been, the grant funding was obtained for a ground-up project.
So are we going to tear down the existing and, and build there?
So if you recall, a few years ago, more than a few years ago now, the city council weighed in on that issue, and the thought was, this thought could change. The thought was at the time that perhaps the old library, existing library, be converted to a senior facility. If you remember, there was a senior programming study commissioned, and the results of that indicated at build-out, we needed more than just the 7th Street, or the uptown senior center. We needed more, more space than that for build-out. And it was thought that the, the existing library building had fairly good bones and, and could be converted to a senior facility. But that's, that's up to city council.
Is that that project where we had looked at building, that Chapman Building, that, in that parking lot area?
Yes, at that time, exactly. That there was a conceptual design done, if you remember, for that property that the city owns on the bluff.
Can we build that for 18 million?
You know, it's a great question. We can certainly build a project for 18 million. It depends on what is all intended for that project, which is part of the reason I think you need, it's so important that, that you have the elected official-level advisory committee or, or design committee that makes recommendations to each of the board or city council, you know, school board supervisors and the city council. Because that's an important part of that process. What, what do you build for 18 million? And maybe that's a Phase 1, and with the ability to expand into a Phase 2 in the future as you continue to seek other funds. We have a federal grant that we, application that we should hear about later this month or early January. So as we have done with other projects, we'll continue to pursue those partnerships and grant funding for subsequent phases. But we feel like we can build a, a really good Phase 1 for 18 million.
And this is going to be an important committee for someone to be on, because we're going to build a brand-new library. And so you're going to have a hand in doing that, certain, some direction in that, so.
So do you want to do a motion to approve this new committee and then add some members? Or do you want to do all at once? Is that amenable?
Yeah, I, you could do it all at once. A motion to approve the committee and to select a person and, and alternate. And, and just for the record, we had to start somewhere. And so you're the first to act on this before the board and before the school board, so.
What time does it meet?
We'll, we'll work around your schedule and make it, to meet your schedule if you're the selected person, like in the afternoon or, or early evening, if that helps, Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I'm in on that.
I'm interested.
Okay, so Councilman Thorpe, Councilman Garner.
If you could, please select one alternate, since, since we probably will only have one board member, supervisor, board member, and one school board member, so.
I'll volunteer to be the alternate.
I'm sorry, one of the two needs to probably be an alternate.
I didn't see that up there, I looked like you wanted a third. Understood.
I don't mind being primary, but I don't know what his desire is.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, so one of them volunteering for was the motion, do you want to formally? Do you have a motion to accept that?
Yes.
And just as part of that motion is to form the committee as well.
Did you give the second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ucaipa Cala Mesa Joint Unified School District Ad Hoc Council Committee. I'd like to remain on that.
I'll do that. Unless those guys want to do it.
All right. I'll motion that be approved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ucaipa Valley Water District and General Water Issue Council Committee. Mayor Protem Duncan, you're currently on it, would you like to remain?
I'll stay there. I've been an alternate. I've never been asked to be there, so.
Okay.
It's an easy one.
With Councilman Garner? Is there a motion to accept that?
Yes, I make a motion to accept that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, that's two members, correct? No, no, no alternate on this one, two members.
Correct.
Do we need an alternate? No.
Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee. I would like to remain on that committee if possible.
I think you and John should both be on that.
I as well.
We do need an alternate for two.
I'll be the alternate.
Councilman Venable? And I'll move approval on that item, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ucaipa Valley Chamber of Commerce Ad Hoc Committee. Mayor Protem Duncan, you're currently on that, would you like to remain?
I've never been asked to come to a meeting, so it's easy.
All right. I'll, I'll be on there as well. And I'll move approval on that item, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ucaipa Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee.
Do we, that hasn't met in ages, has it?
No, it hasn't met for some time. There seemed to be a lack of interest by some of the other members of that committee at that time. It's certainly something that could be useful if council wants to encourage our other members to get more active, our partners to get more active in that, in that process.
Who are the other members?
We had some faith-based members and business members, and so it's not a, that membership is not formal. It's just people that decided to participate with us. We could reach out to those folks again to, to work on that.
I think it is important that we have that committee. Certainly, I don't want Ucaipa to be viewed as the bully or the mean kid. Homelessness is a tragic event that happens. I want to see people who fall in hard times be given a hand up. And that's not without saying that our law enforcement don't shy away from aggressively enforcing law, regardless of housing status. So I would like to be on that committee and see that homeless outreach be a critical member, or a critical function in our, in our city. Would anybody else like to be on that committee?
I'll be on there with you.
Okay. I'll move approval on that item, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to two. We're getting close. Small Business Incubator Selection Committee.
Do we still need to have that?
That's one that I would recommend that you disband.
I make a motion that we disband that or eliminate that.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ucaipa Performing Arts Entertainment Committee. So the question that comes to mind is, how often is this committee assisting our phenomenal city staff in selecting entertainment? Because as of right now, we've had a great performing arts center lineup. We keep on seeing even better names come to our city. Headliners that I would be surprised to see here or showing up. So is this one that is being taxed all that often?
So the, and Megan can, can speak to it as well. But what's happened is the process, we have learned through the process that, and city council has given staff direction to go ahead and award contracts relative to the entertainment, just because of the way the process works. You have to, you have to catch those folks when the opportunity arises. By the time you come back to council or go through a committee and come back to council, which was the process five or six years ago, you lose them. And so council gave staff some authority to select those and contract for those entertainment opportunities as they come up. But what this committee could perhaps do is, is meet occasionally and provide input to staff relative to the genre for certain events, well in advance, that sort of thing, if council chooses to continue in the, in the vein of the, of the process that we have been over the last several years.
Is there currently any method for the community to communicate with community services regarding their desire to see genres of entertainment? My, my question is, is do we need the city council of the city to represent the interests of the people to, on this matter? Or is this something that the city has a method set in place to communicate with you directly or with your, with your department, ma'am?
We currently have a list when people call us and say, we really want to hear this, we want to see this. And so we have an Excel spreadsheet that writes down everybody's request. Every, I'd say, once a year, we put out a request through the News Mirror, a survey through the News Mirror, as well as online, that asks, what genre of music would you like to see? And the Ucaipa Bulletin also helps us get that information out. And then we take the results of those surveys and seek talent in those genres.
Okay. I'll volunteer to be on this committee.
And I don't mind still doing it.
Okay, with Councilman Thorpe, I'll move approval on that item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number five, Citizen Service Appointments to Various Commissions and Committees.
Thank you, Mayor. This is that time of year where you do point people to various committees and commissions. In 2001, it was, we were notified that we had a couple people that did not actually live in the boundaries of the city limits, even though their mailing address says Ucaipa. They actually live outside of our city boundary. And included in the staff report is a map that identifies three people that have applied in this current cycle that do live outside those boundaries. Also, after the deadline to submit applications, we did receive additional applications that are highlighted with an asterisk. I distributed a new Exhibit A this evening. In addition, we did receive three more this afternoon, and they're identified on the list in italic. So before you this evening is that we recommend that you appoint members to the Health Ucaipa Committee, the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, Public Arts Committee, Trails and Open Space Committee, and Vector Control. And in addition, we are seeking your direction pertaining to membership on these organizations in terms of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. But that's, we're going to return, so scratch that out, sorry. Also, we need council direction on whether the citizen service applications received that do not meet the three qualifications, which is, you have to be a resident of Ucaipa, you own a business in Ucaipa, or you own property in Ucaipa. We're seeking your direction on that item.
Very well, I do have two speaker slips on the matter. First speaker, Hanson Wang. You're reminded that we have three minutes to speak on this matter.
Does that mean I have to speak fast? Thank you for listening to me and welcome to the council, to the new members. Just as some of my past, I've been. of minor experience in planning clinics and hospitals. I think it's important that I have no ties to any organizations that would have financial benefit to the Planning Commission and that I am for growth, both in commercial as well as residential. I, I am looking, because we're into families, the family-friendly commercial, so that our children can enjoy it. And I like to maintain a sense of a rural culture for the city that many people would like to come and live here, including my children and grandchildren. Just another item about myself is I do read things carefully and I will ponder on the effects that some item would cause so that, before I make a decision on those kind of things. Other than that, in general, I support our first-line responders as well as basic school education and our health of our community as well. So, in summary, I like to say that I would like to represent the community of Ucaipa and help in the development that will enhance our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Kevin Miskin.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. First of all, congratulations to council members Chris Venable and also Matt Garner. We appreciate your service and also congratulations, Mayor Justin Beaver and also Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Duncan. Thank you for your service. Following up on, on the mayor's comment about radical changes and the people needing to make sure that those radical changes don't, don't occur, I want to make sure we understand that the city council will be making some extremely important decisions over this next year. Certainly regarding the, the, the culture and the future of Ucaipa. There are plans that are being presented in the very near future that are going to influence the culture of this city. Probably the most insignificant of these is the 1,000 acres up on the north bench, which is being contemplated now for commercial wineries and high-density, high-density housing, cluster housing. The only access into these locations is via Ivy, Carter, Fur, and also Oak Glen Road. These are popular cycling areas. These are popular running areas for our high school students, the cross-country team. There are no sidewalks, and now we're going to have buzzed and drunk, more drunk drivers on those roads in our residential areas. Five of the members who are seeking Planning Commission appointments right now sit on the Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Committee. These are Donna Snodgrass, who is the chair, Tony Hicks, Christopher Markarian, Christine Muller, and Caesar Roldan, or Cesar Roldan, I don't know how you pronounce it. In my opinion, they are going to be voting on the very recommendations that they have made from their committee. This is a clear conflict of interest, and we're asking you to reject all five of those, of those applications. The city, citizens of Ucaipa need to know that we are being represented by, by unbiased people that sit on our Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, any other speaker slips on this matter by chance?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Is there an Excel spreadsheet on this one, or are we going to go off this hard copy?
Go in the order that is on the recommendations if you so choose.
Alright, so I'll just, we'll go from the top to bottom. Healthy Ucaipa Committee says seven vacant positions. And Jennifer, the, do you want us to address the, the two clarifying items first regarding how we're going to accept? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, so for the Parks and Recreation Committee, you have two members on that that are highlighted in bold that do not live within the city boundary. And then, you do have a mem, an applicant applying for the Trails and Open Space Committee that also does not live in Ucaipa. So, none of them meet the three parameters. They don't live in Ucaipa, they don't have a business in Ucaipa, and they don't own property.
So, are you, the, the, staff report is seeking direction on whether we're going to allow that or if we're going to amend our resolution, or?
Correct.
Okay.
What year, did you say 2005? Earlier, you said that they've been serving since 2005? The folks that live outside the city, or there was a decision made by council to accept that?
No, we had, we have a member, Tim Carlyle, who has served on the Parks and Rec Commission for years. Probably, I'd say, at least past 25 years. But he was an actor, he was Mr. Stater Brothers, and then he did real estate in town, and so in his application had Ucaipa, and he stated that he lived here for years. In addition, I think Dee Dee Chudy has served Trails and Open Space Committee for a few. Yes.
I didn't realize that until this staff report. I didn't realize that was the case.
So, these aren't, if what you said earlier, if I, if I remember correctly, these are city addresses that are in the county, just outside of our city limits. They're not Redlands citizens, they're not coming from different parts of the state. These are, they're still, they have an address that says Ucaipa on it, but it's a county address, is that right?
Yeah, they're, basically, they live in county unincorporated areas. And the addresses are implemented through the postal service to deliver mail. They don't establish the boundaries for the city of Ucaipa.
The problem is, though, how far out are we going to go? I mean, how far, like, like, I mean, I know, I know where the, I saw where these three locations were, but I've always operated on the premise that when I've asked people if they want to serve on a committee, "Do you live in Ucaipa?", and they say, "No." So, I say, "Well, you don't qualify then." So, in this case, that would be the case, right? I mean, they don't live in the city.
And that's what we're seeking direction from you this evening. And if, when you're looking at who you'd like to appoint to the Parks and Rec Commission and the Trails and Open Space, at that time, we'll receive your direction on if, if those are the people you'd like to choose and you'd want us to come back or that you'll waive the requirement of the resolution if that's who you're choosing.
Okay. So, then we'll, we'll just start from the top and go down then. So, the Healthy Ucaipa Committee has seven vacant positions with four applicants. So, I will, do we still do individual appointees, or do we just appoint them all?
Yeah, you can appoint them all if you so choose.
So, it says that council member Beaver, Duncan, Garner, Thorpe, and Venable each appoint one member to the Healthy Ucaipa Committee and that the city council appoint two at-large members to the Healthy Ucaipa Committee.
Okay. I would like to appoint Jeff Distelberg.
And I'll appoint Meredith Sherwin.
I'll appoint Cynthia Lopez-Winner.
I'll appoint Heather Obree.
You don't have one.
So, Mr. Garner, you'll have to wait to get new applications, and then when we, and then we'll repost it to get two additional at-large and bring it back to council.
Okay. Mobile Home Rent Review Commission.
William Reagan is my appointee. He was before, he still is, so.
And I brought Leonard LaRocco Senior.
Very well. Parks and Recs, Recreation Commission. I would like to appoint Denise Allen to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
And I'll appoint Leonard LaRocco Junior.
Darren Espirito is my appointee to that commission.
I'll appoint Doug Witham.
And you've got Maureen, right?
Yes.
Can you speak into the mic and state the name, please?
Yes, Maureen Ingles.
Just prior to this, I was handed the speaker slip for this item. Agenda number, well, it doesn't say an item number. Was it intended for five? Alright. Kathy Cote, she'd like to be here on the matter.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Cote. It's probably a little bit too late, but I live about 500 yards outside of, I live in Riverside County. So, I was up for the Parks and Rec. But my kids attend school in the city, and I'm on the school board, and I was kind of hoping to create a liaison there, so.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so Parks and Recreation Commission, it's been addressed. Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Okay. Planning Commission. I would like to appoint Richard Beck.
JR Algauer is my appointee to that, that commission.
Lyle Vick will be mine.
I'd like to appoint Donna Snodgrass.
And Tony Hicks. For me.
Did John go?
Yeah, he did. Mr. Hicks. Public Arts Committee.
I'm sorry, hang on. We, two at-large members?
Okay.
I'd like to have David Higginson and Stacy Chester, who I'd like to have on that Planning Commission.
I'll second Stacy Chester.
I'd like to nominate Christine Muller for that, though.
So, we have one for Stacy Chester.
Two.
I'm sorry, two for Stacy Chester. Who was the other person that you nominated?
David Higginson. He's an architect here in Ucaipa.
Okay.
Who did you have, John?
Christine Muller.
Christine Muller.
And I got Donna Snodgrass.
I got you on there. So, give us, so, does anybody second Christine Muller? Okay, hearing none. David Higginson. I'll second that. So, we'll take, you want to do a vote for, we'll do a vote for David Higginson. It's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We have a first and a second nominating Stacy Chester. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. So, JR Algauer, Donna Snodgrass, Richard Beck, Tony Hicks, David Higginson, Lyle Vick, and Stacy Chester. Is that right? Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, you do have a late request to speak on the Trails and Open Space as well, if you'd like.
Okay. So, we'll do public arts real quick, and then we'll hear the speaker on Trails and Open Spaces.
So, for the public arts, it's five at-large members?
Okay. So, then we can appoint, it looks like we have five applicants. Will all five of those applicants be appointed to the Public Arts Committee? Are there any individual appointees? Or is it, okay, okay. Darryl Bryan will be, who I appoint?
Leonard, Leonard LaRocco would be mine.
Kit Satrie. Hope I said that right.
They're all at-large. So, if you want all five, you can do a motion for all five.
Alright, so then, our motion that we accept all five. Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Terri Boone on item number five for the Trails and Open Spaces Committee.
I would like to ask that you make exceptions for the people who live in Oak Glen to be on the Open Trails Committee, because most of the trails are in Oak Glen or in their neighborhood. When I was running for school, school board, Oak Glen and Mountain Home Village are in the Ucaipa School Board District. They're just not in the city council district. So, I'm going to ask that you waive that, not in the, in the city limits living for the people who are running for trails, please.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to appoint Christine Muller to the Trails and Open Spaces Committee.
I'm appointing Kelly LaRocco.
Catherine Barton for me.
Who's that?
Catherine Barton.
Catherine.
I'll go for Kathy Utley.
I'll go for Patrick Smith.
Okay, that's five.
And I'm going for Lenny LaRocco Junior for my second pick.
Is that Leonard LaRocco?
Junior.
Leonard LaRocco Junior.
Okay, so you all, right now, I have everyone with their appointment. And in addition, you need to appoint four at-large members to the Trails and Open Space, so that's your at-large.
That's my pick, my at-large.
We've got to have Candy Cansler on there, too.
Indeed. And then Dee Dee Chudy, I would like to see her on there. So, would we need to vote to accept that? You, uh, vote to like, accept that, or is just the appointment?
You can decide to waive the requirement as a part of the motion if you so choose.
Okay.
Is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
Who was the gentleman that got up and spoke? Robert Richmond, yeah, Robert Richmond.
Yes.
Let me, two more? Or one more?
Think we got it.
Catherine Barton.
So, for at-large, so far, I've heard Kelly LaRocco, Dee Dee Chudy, Candy?
Candy. I think I heard Patrick Smith as well.
Patrick Smith was Councilmember Garner's appointment, right?
Well, I was just picking one. I don't have an appointment for that.
So, you want that to be an at-large?
Sure.
So, Mr. Smith?
We have one more.
So, it's,
how many more do we need?
Well, that would be four at-large, but then I still need a council appointment for Mr. Garner.
I don't have one.
Okay, so, we'll bring it back.
See which, who's left.
I did lose track, ma'am, so.
Tilden, you want me to say it or no?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Mr., or Tillen Woolard, Robert Richmond, Adam Tassat, Douglas Leach.
Pick Adam Tassat.
Just Adam Tassat, okay.
Is that your appointee?
There's the nine vacant positions.
So, is there a motion for the four at-large, which would be Kelly LaRocco, Chudy, Cansler, and Smith?
So, I, I'd pick,
And waiver of the resident requirement.
I appointed Kelly LaRocco.
Yeah, that's your appointment. Right now, I'm just trying to find at-large. Your appointments are in, but right now, we're talking at-large.
So, Jennifer, for the, for the sake of clarity, can you read back the nine positions that are, the nine applicants that have been appointed, please?
So, for council member specific appointments, I have Mayor Beaver choosing Catherine Barton. No, Christine Muller. Is that correct?
Yes.
I had Beaver twice. And then I have Venable choosing LeRoc, Leonard LaRocco?
Kelly. Kelly is mine.
Okay, that's where I messed up. Oh, Kelly's going to be your, your selection?
Yes, and Lenny, our Leonard was, was my.
At-large.
Okay. And then, okay. Mr. Garner, Councilman Mr. Garner, councilmember Garner picked Adam Tesat. Mayor Pro Tem Duncan picked Kathy Utley. And councilmember Thor.
Catherine Barton. Who was that?
Okay.
First one, Catherine Barton. Okay. So we had a motion to accept with the waiving of the resolution for the applicant who lived out of the city limits. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I think we're just, want to make sure we understand the motion. Is that a motion just limited to the waiver, or is that a motion to appoint all of the candidates here and waive with respect to candidate Chudy?
Correct. Both, both, both was my motion with a second from Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
And just to make sure for the at-large, I have these names right, sorry. So Leonard LaRocco will be at-large.
Yes.
DeeDee Chudy will be at-large. Candy Cansler will be at-large. And Smith will be at-large. Patrick Smith, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Vector Control Committee.
I chose Kelly LaRocco.
These are three at-large positions, and you have two applications.
So I motion that we appoint both Kelly LaRocco and Mike.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we done with that?
The Ucaipa Valley Wine Country Planning Committee? That was limited, right? Okay.
All right.
Moving on to item number six. Fentanyl.
So I'm sorry, just for, to clean the record. So can I have an overall motion for those, for the healthy Ucaipa, mobile home review, Parks and Rec, Planning Commission? Council appointees, that's what I need a motion on for those.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, fentanyl drug scheduling and enhanced criminal sentencing. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As council is aware, and many are aware, fentanyl and other drug abuse has become rampant in our current society. The number of overdose deaths involving synthetic opioids in 2020 was more than 18 times the number in 2013. More than 57,000 people died from overdoses involving synthetic opioids in 2020. The latest provisional mortality data from CDC indicates that more than 100,000, 107,000 Americans died from a drug overdose in the 12 months ending in January 2022. Of these deaths, it's estimated that 80,590 of these deaths, or 75%, involve at least one opioid, with 71,450, 66.5% involving synthetic opioids, primarily illicitly manufactured fentanyl or fentanyl analogs. The United States Drug Enforcement Administration oversees Controlled Substance Act replaces all substances into some manner regulating under existing federal law in one of the five schedules, depending on the drug's acceptable medical use, the drug's abuse, and/or dependency potential. The abuse rate is a determinant factor in the scheduling of the drug. For example, Schedule I drugs have a high potential for abuse and the potential to create severe psychological or physical dependence as the drug schedule changes to Schedule II, III, et cetera. So does the abuse potential. Schedule V drugs represent the least potential for abuse. Schedule I, of course, the most potential. As it stands today, fentanyl is a Schedule II drug, meaning the substances or chemicals within the drug have a high potential for abuse, which with use potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence, it's unlikely that fentanyl will be rescheduled as Schedule I drug due to acceptable medical use without some pressure along the way. However, in 2020, Congress passed a temporary reauthorization study for the Emergency Scheduling of Fentanyl Analogues Act. Due to these conditions that I referenced earlier on, this bill temporarily allows for scheduling orders issued by the DEA to place fentanyl-related substance in the Schedule I category of the Controlled Substance Act. Since 2020, Congress has continued to pass temporary extensions for this bill. The current deadline is set to expire this month in 2022. And so staff, the first item in the recommendations is related to that, where staff is recommending that council approve a letter to Congressman Jay Obernolte requesting that his office petition the United States Drug Enforcement Administration to permanently schedule, rather than temporary, permanently schedule fentanyl analogs as a Schedule I drug. Is there also where drug offenses and charges are brought down to a misdemeanor and dropped entirely in many cases across the nation, especially in California? Fortunately, the California state legislation seems eager and ready to tackle this growing crisis. Last week, Senator Ochoa Bog introduced Senate Bill 13, and at least indicates that there is some movement in that direction. In addition, as council is aware, many of the drug-related offenses are downplayed to a misdemeanor. And, and therefore, to raise awareness and make this request, the second item on the action is to recommend a letter be sent to Governor Gavin Newsom requesting that his administration work with California State Legislature to prioritize enacting legislation that enhance criminal sentencing as it relates to possession, sale, and distribution of fentanyl analogs to a felony offense. And then again, the final action that's being requested this evening is relative to Senate Bill 13 authored by Senator Rosalicia Ochoa Bog, who was here earlier this evening. This would require a person who is convicted of, or who pleads guilty or no contest to the above crimes to receive a written advisory of the danger of manufacturing or distribution of controlled substances. And that if a person dies as a result of that action, and this is really the, the meat and potatoes of this bill, the manufacturer or distributor can be charged with voluntary manslaughter or murder. Staff will continue to monitor this bill as it makes its way through legislative process, but staff's recommending that council consider approving a letter supporting Senate Bill 13 as well this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for city staff?
What is it now? Is it not a felony now?
Only under certain circumstances. It certainly is downplayed to a misdemeanor in many, many instances.
Is that by the federal government or the state government?
State.
State.
I make a motion to approve one, two, and three.
So before we, I do want to speak on the matter. So in 2014, I believe Californians were placed in a peacher dish by week on crime DAs and politicians to experiment, to experiment what would happen if we took a soft-on-crime approach. Prior to 2014, possession of drugs, dangerous drugs, was a felony, and I think appropriately so. So instead, in 2014, we abandoned decades' worth of time-tested criminal procedure and effectively eliminated consequence from our society. Ask any law enforcement officer in the room, possession of drugs, get you a ticket. Nothing more. These horrible decisions, when examined with the benefit of hindsight, were some of the deadliest and most dangerous decisions made by our state legislature. And some will say that voters approved these decisions, which is true. However, if we analyze the horrifically confusing wording of the bills themselves and examine the titles of the bills, I think we can conclude that voters were intentionally misled. Proposition 47, the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, is one I'm going to be talking about the most. Proposition 47 was the one that took possession of a controlled substance and made it a misdemeanor. It also reclassified what constituted felony theft in the state of California, taking it from $400 worth of theft to the threshold of $950. It eliminated tools in our penal code to arrest people who have shown habitual theft proclivity. Penal Code 666 of the California Penal Code back then was a felony. Means that if you had prior convictions for petty theft and then were arrested again for theft, you could be charged with a felony. Prop 57, the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act. Again, public safety, sounds great. Assembly Bill 109, Public Safety Realignment Act. Not one of those sound bad, because who doesn't want more public safety? Who doesn't want safer schools? But who really wants to read the entire bill? And even if you had a strong desire to read it, unless you were in fact an attorney yourself, you'd likely be lost with the never-ending circles of legal language that are mostly in Latin. The authors of the bill, and admittedly, most lawmakers know this. They know you and I will likely not take the time to read the bill in its entirety. They know they have one sentence to explain to you, the voters, what they're trying to push. And so what do they call it? The Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, because it sounds great. Who could, who could refuse such a bill? The collateral hypocrisy reared its disgusting head in the height of the COVID pandemic, and I'll tell you how. We endured the greatest psychological fear campaign in the history of mankind with lockdowns, mask mandates, virtual learning, vaccine mandates, industry shutdown, small businesses shut down and fined for noncompliance, and a shift of power from state legislature to local public health officials. And all for what? To save lives. All the above was done to save lives, and yet we sit here discussing fentanyl. It's killing people, and yet our state legislatures stand mute. We had the laws in place to prevent these things from happening, or certainly take a harder consequence approach, and we abandoned that for misdemeanors. So consider this, a felony conviction for possession of a controlled substance, in addition to prison term, carried with it a fine in the amount of up to $50,000. The cost of a small business falling apart during COVID would cost a lot more than that. And we impose that fine on people, but we won't take even small, we won't even take small steps to try to save lives as it relates to fentanyl and drug use by rescinding Prop 47, which would effectively do what our city manager was discussing today. We don't need to put pressure on the governor to enact the legislation. Legislation was enacted. We abandoned it for misdemeanors. Suffice to say, Prop 47, 57, and 819 were, in my opinion, a level of calculated negligence by our state legislatures and weak prosecutors. A disgusting example of the failures of the soft-on-crime approach, and have, as a result, gifted us with lawlessness, a rise in violence, an opioid epidemic, and a homeless population, which is now unmanageable. When I was working in the city in law enforcement, albeit as a volunteer, we had one homeless person walk in the streets of Ucaipa. I find it odd that when we make it altogether easy for people to access illegal drugs, mind-altering substances, then we start to see a rise in homelessness. Is it perhaps that people were using drugs, failing drug tests at work, becoming unemployed, and losing their homes? I think it's a telling, a question we need to have answered. So let's put it in perspective. One gram of methamphetamine, it's a sugar packet. One gram. Offers anywhere from 10 to 25 hits. One gram. It's a misdemeanor, possession of that. Before it becomes a felony, you need to have 25 grams. So law enforcement in the room, contact somebody with 25 grams of methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, ecstasy. It's a misdemeanor. You get a ticket, you walk free. And yet, with a possession of 200, or with 25 grams, it's 250 doses or hits. Possession of a dangerous drug ought to be a felony, and it was previously. The symptoms, this is, this is even more concerning. It seems even more concerning when we talk about mental illness. The symptoms of drug influence is not a mental health symptom, but rather a side effect of a foreign substance taking advantage of one's brain. Meanwhile, the people who truly are vulnerable and need mental health services must wait hours upon hours or days to see the hero doctors in our mental health clinics, because they are busy trying to appropriately identify which drug this person is under the influence of. A mind-altering substance is not a mental health issue. The failed experiment, which we can thank, the former San Francisco DA and now the failing LA County DA must end, and it needs to end now. No more going soft-on-crime. Consequences must be in place, and I submit it safe to say that the authors of these horrible bills were products of the timeout generation, a generation that knew not of consequence for one's actions. So I would like to see the city of Ucaipa not only support these items, these letters to our congressman, our governor, and to our state legislatures. But my official motion is that we approve this item and ask the staff return to us at a later meeting with another item that will outline establishing a coalition of local governments to work in partnership with the League of Cities to rescind Prop 47 and the trifecta of dangerous bills that were presented to us in 2014. Sorry to step on your motion, but I'd like to see that motion carry.
So somebody going to second that, or am I going to?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Possible action on pending legislation. Is there anything to report?
I have nothing else to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven, extending the existence of a local emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic impact on emergency medical services. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is a continuation of items that we have brought to you relative to emergency declarations. As council is aware, we are required to return this to council every 14 days, and staff is recommending that we continue this emergency declaration, particularly as it relates to emergency services, transport, paramedics, it's fire services, et cetera.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'm over approval.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, Mr. Casey, again, extending the existence of local emergency due to the 2022 September storm event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll be brief. We are again required to return every 14 days on emergency declarations. We did, we did experience flooding and erosion and selt, sedimentation in our systems in the September 2022 storm. Staff is continuing to seek grant funding to help mitigate the costs associated with the storm. Have been successful to a certain extent and would like to continue in that process. Staff is recommending that we extend this emergency declaration.
Okay, any questions for staff? I'll make the motion. We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Monthly Treasures Report, October 2022. Mr. Casey?
I'm going to refer this one to Philip White, our new Director of Finance. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. In your packet this evening, you have the October Monthly Treasures Report. The purpose of the Monthly Treasures Report is to keep city council informed of the city's cash and investment portfolio. The city, the city's investment policy provides guidelines for prudent cash management of the city's funds. The investment objectives of the investment policy are safety of capital, liquidity to meet cash flow needs, and yield or return on investment. The second page of this presentation highlights the cash balances as of October 31st, 2022. There's three categories there. The first two categories are unrestricted funds. So the treasurer managed cash and investments of $31.4 million. The PFM managed cash and investments of $16.6 million. The third category, cash with fiscal agent, is a restricted category of investments totaling $51.5 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have with the October Treasures Report.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any questions of staff? None? Is there a motion to, oh, this is a receiving file, correct? Okay. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number 10, Final Track Map Number 17031. Mr. Landon Kern.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This report is for the approval of Final Track Map 17031. Our first slide before you, you will see the location map here for this final map, located on the west side of Fifth Street between Avenue E and Wildwood Canyon Road. And as with other private development projects that require the subdivision of land into five or more parcels, a tentative track map and final track map are required per the Subdivision Map Act. Tentative track map for a project is reviewed by staff and presented at the city's Plan and Planning Commission. Tentative map is reviewed by the Planning Commission, and when approved, typically includes project-specific conditions that are developed by the various city departments as required by the city's adopted Development Code. And in order to ensure consistency with the city's general plan, city council does not typically review a tentative map unless it's been denied by the Planning Commission and the applicant chooses to appeal to the city council level for, for review. On the second slide, you'll see a visual of the tentative track map that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2004 to permit the development of a 33-unit, single-family detached condominium project on 5.47 acres. And the address of this map is 12742 Fifth Street, APN 31817422. And the location, once again, on. And the location, once again, on the west side of Fifth Street between Avenue E and Wildwood Canyon Road here. Staff has conducted a condition compliance review, and all of the conditions of approval applied to the final track map have been met. City Council approval is required to accept and authorize the recordation of this final map. City Council approval is also required to accept any easements or offers of dedication for public roads and highways and utility purposes. This subdivision is required to dedicate an additional 14 feet on the west side of Fifth Street to accommodate a 44-foot half width street consistent with the city's general plan. Fifth Street is classified as an arterial street, and the city's general plan with five lanes, similar to the segment on Fifth Street just below to the south of Eau Kappa Boulevard, with five lanes, two in each direction, and that center left turn lane. And so, with that, the recommendations with this report are that City Council approve the final track map number 17031 and accept an offer of dedication for public roads, city highways, and public utility purposes on a portion of Fifth Street as delineated on final track map number 17031, and authorize the recordation of the map and accept securities from Eau Kappa 33 LLC. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions about this report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
This project has been a project, a track map, tentative track map since 2008, hasn't it? Nine or eight or something?
The original tentative track map was approved in 2004.
Four?
Yes, in November 17 of 2004.
So, this project has been a real project or a project moving forward since 2004. So, this is nothing new.
I move to accept 1 through 3. Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11: professional services agreement with Props AV.
Good evening and congratulations, Mayor and City Council. Currently, production services for the Performing Arts Center are provided by Props AV, and this is through a contract, and it allows the city the ability to execute the goals of City Council, which are implementing cost-effective programming with at least a 50% cost recovery and collaborating with local businesses. Under the existing Props AV contract, Props provides production services at the Performing Arts Center, which includes rentals and concerts. Due to the number of rentals and shows and city special events, and in order to provide a high-quality 2023 State of the City event, there is a need to increase the current contract amount by $200,000. It is close to exceeding the current contract amount of $350,000. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the continued partnership with Props AV and extend the terms of the agreement to a not exceed amount of $550,000. Of the $200,000, it is anticipated a minimum of 50% of the cost will be reimbursed through revenues earned from rental clients, and there is sufficient budget in the departments. Therefore, there is no budget impact as a result of this item. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff?
No questions, but having seen what these folks can do firsthand, I mean, I think it's money well spent. I move to accept it.
I see that we started in... Actually, what does that company do? I mean, do they provide their entertainment? Do they go after... What's their role?
They provide sound, lighting, and they meet with rental clients that are renting the Performing Arts Center to see... It's all just sound and lighting needs for the Performing Arts Center and city special events. In addition, for the State of the City, they go out and they do one-on-one filming of council members, and they also film projects throughout the city throughout the year so that when it comes time to have State of the City, they put together this amazing video. In the past, the State of the City video was done by in-staff, and the production of that video is now done by them, and it's higher quality.
I just, I have a problem with, you know, in eight months... Actually, it was nine months. They went from $350,000 to now not to exceed for $550,000. And have you... Have you bid this out, or...
So, if I may, the contract actually began in 2021. So, it began July 1 of 2021, so it's been 18 months. And what has happened is we've just seen an increase in rental clients. So, then the rental client comes into the Performing Arts Center, they rent the facility, and Props AV provides those services, but they charge the services to us, then we charge the client, and then we're refunded the money through the client paying for that service.
And we can't do that in-house anymore?
We had an in-house staff previously, and it was not working out. We went through several people. It's a very difficult trade. In addition, what comes with Props AV is they have state-of-the-art soundboards, speakers, monitors. So, every time we have an artist, they have a writer. And so, part of their job is they read through the writer, and we don't own the equipment. And so, we rent the equipment either through Props AV or another company that maybe has... They have connections within the production industry, and then they recommend to us the lowest bidder to rent that equipment through. It's really a skill set that right now this company is very well-versed in and has done a good job helping us recover those costs by charging the rental client for production services when it is a rental client thing. When it's a city production event, we do go out to bid for each city event, and we get three quotes. And so, sometimes we'll use Props AV, but sometimes we'll use, like you've heard the name, I'm sure, before, Harbor Productions. We've used Calamasa Tech Services, so other companies.
I just feel that we can, for $550,000, I just feel that we could do it in-house a lot better, I think.
Any further discussion?
Nope. Well, we did that for a while, right? We did that initially, and then we shuttered the venue, and then after we shuttered the venue because of COVID, we came back and we contracted it out because we didn't really... We didn't do a good job with it with our own staff in-house.
And we don't have the equipment. And what happens is you go and you purchase the equipment, but then the next artist wants a different monitor. They want a different console. We blow speakers, and so the cost of owning that equipment far exceeds the cost of this contract. If you want to continue with state-of-the-art stuff, we can absolutely purchase stuff at some time, but it would change depending on what each artist wanted.
And the way, the rate at which technology changes, it'd be dead technology by next year.
It's like buying a computer. Five days later, you know, there's...
I just did that. Don't ruin my computer purchasing thing now. Five days.
And to follow on what Mayor Potem Duncan mentioned, we did with the COVID-19 pandemic and the state shutdown, have to shut down the Y-PAC and let those folks go that were involved in programming at the Y-PAC. And if council recalls, at that time, council's direction was moved towards more rentals. And more rentals typically are financially preferable, if you will, to taking the risk of some of the events that we've had at the Performing Arts Theater versus the rental approach, because with the rental approach, you know what the costs are. They take the risk, if you will, of the tickets sold or of the event that is being held. And so, as Megan mentioned, the recovery on those is typically higher. But then on top of that, the State of the City is kind of a secondary effort that council directed with Props AV a couple of years ago, and the quality was much better, as you may recall in that State of the City video. So, first of all, it goes back to July 1 of '21, so it's several years of cost. We have the savings, if you will, of the staff that was doing the work in-house, including benefits and all that. And then you have a better cost recovery. The minimum goal is 50%, but with the rentals, we do better than that. So, you have the cost recovery now that we didn't have four, five, or three years ago when we were doing more of our own shows instead of rental events, if that makes sense. So, are they a service, or do they own all their own equipment?
Go ahead.
They own all their own equipment.
And everything. So, they're not a service. We're not paying a service for them to go out and rent other... So, they own everything.
There are consoles... Trying to think of a recent artist. At Five Winds Country Music Festival, the artists that we had there had some consoles that they didn't have. But they do own a lot of equipment.
For now, it's the best option that we've got, instead of trying to build our own in-house department at this point. This is... Why'd the cost go up so much, though? That's a lot. Is that a big increase, or...
The cost really hasn't changed. What it is, is that, for example, in the month of December last year, we had one rental at the Y-PAC. This year, we've had 16 rentals at the Y-PAC. So, when you rent the Performing Arts Center, there is production cost based on how you want your room to look. This past weekend, we had somebody rent the black box. They wanted uplights so that the room was country-themed, and they wanted to use the LED wall, and then they wanted to have a DJ with a sound system, but they didn't want the DJ to bring their own sound system. So, just for numbers, the cost of that production, we owned the wall, but we didn't own anything else, was $1,000. So, we pay Props AV $1,000, and the client pays us the $1,000, and City Council approves fees says plus 10%. So, there is a cost for using our in-house contracted Props AV service. That makes sense.
And just to clarify, because of the amount of this additional contract extension, it requires council approval. The budgets and the monies are in the budget. The monies are both in the community services budget and the city manager's budget for the State of the City. We've planned for these costs, although, as Megan mentioned, we're getting more rentals than we have ever before, which is a good thing. But we believe that the net costs, the costs in general, are in our budget. It's just the contract requirement for the extension.
I have one more example. So, this past summer, we were able to acquire a partnership with Odyssey, who owns Cave Frog, and there's a concert coming up that will be announced here soon that's a country artist that we didn't, you know, this... We didn't set aside, okay, this is how much money that this artist is going to cost, because it just came to us saying, hey, you know, do you want to sign with this country artist for the Performing Arts Center? And so, therefore, the money's already there and in the budget, but Props AV contract will be additional from what we originally secured with them in order to have this country artist. And earlier in the summer, the same thing happened. We had a country artist come to us, and that show netted about $10,000 for the city, so...
Okay, thank you, Megan. We do have a motion on the table from Councilman Thorpe, I believe. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item number 12: Confire Letter of Intent Amended with Chief Malanowski from
Honorable Mayor, Council. So, San Diego County has issued an RFP for EMS delivery services in 11 EOAs, including the City of Eau Kappa. For the City of Eau Kappa to join the newly proposed EMS division of the Confire Joint Powers Authority, that would allow Eau Kappa more local control of our EMS system. The letter intent proposed tonight is not an MOU. It's not formal. That will come back to council in January, February. A declination of a letter of intent would preclude Eau Kappa from being a member until a minimum of 2029. So, by approving a letter of intent, you allow the city manager and the fire chief to continue discussing, furthering our EMS system here in the city, and allow us to bring back a formal JPA MOU with anticipation of this newly-formed EMS delivery system. Staff at this time recommends approval and issuing a letter of intent, and that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
No questions. I will add on that the Public Safety Committee reviewed this item earlier today, and the committee approved the item. So, any questions of staff? No? Have a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, just to make it clear, there was an amended version that was circulated. Just want to make sure that the motion includes that amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Oh, I'm sorry. Bobby seconded.
Did I?
Okay.
So, did we do the final vote on that? Because he was talking when we were voting.
Do we vote for clarification? All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, item number 13: 2023 Special Event Dates.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. In an effort to get out ahead of special events, we are before you this evening talking about the 2023 calendar of events. The Community Services Department is responsible for planning and executing special events, special event permits, and festivals. The goal of these events is to bring families and residents together to enjoy city parks, facilities, amenities, and to welcome people into the community. Currently, there are four types of events. If I may draw your attention to the screen, we have community events. It is recommended that Extravaganza will be held on Saturday, April 1. This event is where 10,000 eggs are scattered throughout the Eau Kappa Community Park, and children ages 0 to 10 will enjoy an egg hunt in celebration of the Easter season. New this year, the Healthy Eau Kappa recommended and was approved for a three-run series. The first run took place on Thanksgiving Day. It was a turkey trot. Their second run will be a bunny hop, and they are recommending that it take place on Saturday, April 8. It is a 5K and a one-mile run or walk at the community park. Movies in the park start the Wednesday after Eau Kappa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District gets out of school, and it takes place at the amphitheater at the community park. And it'll happen every Wednesday for eight consecutive Wednesdays. Should council approve that this evening, the Fourth of July is on the Fourth of July at the Eau Kappa High School. Concerts in the park begin July 9, which is the Sunday after the Fourth of July, and they take place at the amphitheater in the Eau Kappa Community Park. They begin at 6:30 PM and will continue for five consecutive Sundays. New also in 2022 was a 9/11 memorial ceremony, and is being recommended that this community event continues and will be held on Monday, September 11, 2023, at City Hall, and will be hosted by the City and Eau Kappa Fire. Next is special event permits. The city works with nonprofit organizations and for-profit organizations to host special events throughout the city. There are three main special events that take place every year, and these organizations have already either submitted or begun discussing their dates for 2023. The rodeo is set to take place on March 31 and April 1 of 2023, and it is a partnership with Eau Kappa Equestrian Arena Committee. The Redlands Bike Classic is scheduled for Thursday, April 13, and is put on by the Redlands Bike Classic Company. And the Eau Kappa Christmas Parade, which took place this past Saturday, and is scheduled for December 9, 2023, and is on by the Rotary Club of Eau Kappa. Finally, our special events. The Eau Kappa Music and Arts Festival is scheduled for Friday, May 5, 2023, and Saturday, May 6. This will be the 11th Annual Music and Arts Festival and is held in the Uptown. This event celebrates the reopening of the Uptown. It celebrates Eau Kappa's history and culture and provides entertainment and art from the region. Autumn Fest is scheduled for Friday, September 29, 2023, and Saturday, September 30, 2023. This will also be the 11th annual event, and it will also be held in the Uptown. and it will also be held in the Uptown, it holds a show-and-go car show, where cars cruise from roundabout to roundabout, live entertainment, vendors, family games, and a kid's zone. Five Winds Country Music Festival took place for the first time this year, and is scheduled for Friday, October thirteenth, 2023, and Saturday, October fourteenth, 2023, this would be the second annual festival, and it will be held at Five Winds Ranch, it includes live entertainment, a beer and wine garden, country-themed activities such as line dancing, and photo opportunities, as well as overnight camping. Finally, the final festival of the year is Winter Fest, it's normally scheduled for the Saturday after Thanksgiving, which in 2023 will be Saturday, November twenty fifth, this will be the Tenth Annual Winter Fest, and is also held in the Uptown, it celebrates the holiday season, and Small Business Saturday, if council approves the dates listed in the staff report and above on the screen, marketing will begin immediately for some of these events, which includes placing information on the City and Y-PAC website, the community calendar, the Your Ucaipa Guide that's mailed out to homes in Ucaipa, on banners in the, throughout the community, and there are sufficient resources in fiscal year 2223 adopted budget to fund the spring and summer events listed above, and staff will include the fiscal year 2324 funded events, if approved by city council this evening, in the 2023-2024 draft budget, staff is recommending that city council approve the special event dates for the 2023 calendar year, this concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Megan, are there any questions of staff?
Great report, thank you, I move approval.
I second it.
First and the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on to item number fourteen, Firmin Pressiado Award of Contract Professional Engineering Services for the preparation of a letter of map revision.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, before I begin, I'd just like to give a little background on the need for these professional services, and this is related to some work that we need to process through FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, regarding our floodplain here in the City of Ucaipa, back in nineteen sixty-eight, FEMA established that National Flood Insurance Program, which included the, the mapping of the areas within the city that are prone to flooding, or with a high risk of flooding, and then after that, in nineteen seventy-three, Congress passed the Flood Disaster Protection Act of nineteen seventy-three, and this was important, because it, it made the purchase of flood insurance mandatory for properties within the flooding areas, as delineated in the FEMA maps, on the screen before you is some, are some photos of the nineteen sixty-nine flood in the Dunlap area, these photos here, the ones on the right are from Dunlap Elementary, that showed the amount of mud and silt and debris that, that flood brought to the Dunlap area. The next map on the screen, on the screen, this is the FEMA map from two thousand eight that showed the floodway and the floodplain in the Ucaipa area, and, just to, to orient ourselves, this is Ucaipa Boulevard on the north, from east to west, and the I-ten freeway down here on the bottom left, and then Oakland Road travels along here, along the Wilson Creek Channel, the dark blue areas is the floodway, and then the light blue area is the floodplain area, the difference between the two, the floodway, for the areas of the properties within the dark blue, the floodway area, back in, in two thousand eight, according to this map, no new buildings, or additions or expansions of existing buildings were allowed in that area, and not to mention the fact that properties with a mortgage or some other financial obligation were required to pay flood insurance, for the light blue area, the floodplain area, new buildings and additions or expansions to existing buildings would require some additional engineering work in order for, for them to be developed or expanded upon, they would also require an elevation certificate prepared by a land surveyor, showing that the, the finished floor height, or the elevation of the buildings was above the, the base flood elevation established by FEMA on these maps, and similar to the floodway properties, the properties within the light blue floodplain area also were required to pay the flood insurance if they had a mortgage, a mortgage or a financial obligation, so, between two thousand four and two thousand twelve, the city completed many drainage improvement projects, and also flood control projects throughout the city, many of these projects benefited the Dunlap area, those projects include the Oakland Creek Basins, those are the basins next to State of Brothers on Bryant Street, the Tenth Street Bridge over Wilson Creek, down, kinda behind Del Taco, the Lower Del Taco on Tenth Street, Dunlap Channel improvements were completed between Ucaipa Boulevard and Avenue E, and there were also other smaller storm drain projects that were completed in the area, another important thing that happened in two thousand twelve was that the city's master plan of drainage document was updated, and that's a document that identifies all of the, the drainage improvements and the flood control projects that, that need to be completed in the city, that was updated in two thousand twelve and approved by the city council, and then, as a result, result of all these efforts, at the time, the city initiated a, an application through FEMA to revise these maps, that, that application process is called the LOMER, or Letter of Map Revision Process, the city submitted that application in two thousand fourteen, after contracting with an engineering firm at that time to provide the similar service that is being requested as part of this contract, back in two thousand fourteen, that, that engineering firm provided the, the hydrology modeling and the application to FEMA, to show that the projects that were completed in the city warranted a revision to the map, that application was submitted, and as a result of that, that submittal, and the approval pro, the approval from FEMA, this is the map that resulted, and, from that process, and you can see that both the dark blue floodway area and the light blue floodplain area were drastically reduced, this is the two thousand eight map, and two thousand fourteen map. One, one thing that's important to note here is that, that you'll notice the dark blue floodway area on this map is almost completely encompassed within the Wilson Creek Channel area, in, in other words, most of the floodway was, was able to be encapsulated within the Wilson Creek area, the Wilson Creek Channel area, and, as a result of this map revision, two hundred and eighty-six properties were removed from the floodway and floodplain, the properties in pink here are those properties that were removed, from the FEMA-designated floodplain and floodway, there are many benefits, some of them I mentioned before, you know, all of these properties, if they had a mortgage on the property, they were no longer required to pay flood insurance, and a lot of the property owners could add on to their homes, or build that patio that they wanted to build that they couldn't build before. This is another version of that same, the, the same map, this is the, the current FEMA floodway and floodplain map, and, again, as you can see, there, there's a lot of properties along Wilson Creek that are still within the floodplain and the floodway. You'll, you can see on this map that there is the floodway in dark blue down near the, near the I-ten freeway, you can see a bottleneck, I'll call it a bottleneck, and that is a location of the Dunlap Boulevard Bridge, which is, has existed there for many years, and as a result, you can see that the floodway kinda goes outside of the Wilson Creek Channel area, and that's because that, that bridge is currently undersized, it does, there's not enough capacity underneath the bridge for Wilson Creek to convey the, the one-hundred-year rain event storm flows, so again, it, it essentially acts like a bottleneck, so, in, after the two thousand fourteen LOMER process, you know, around that time, and even after that, there were some additional infrastructure, drainage infrastructure projects that were completed along Wilson Creek, the bridge along Avenue D was constructed, also, the Thirteenth Street Bridge at Wilson Creek was constructed, and Avenue E Storm Drain in the Dunlap area was also constructed, and then at the time, in two thousand fifteen, city council also prioritized a project in our adopted budget and capital improvement program to essentially, essentially remove the Dunlap Boulevard Bridge, and, remove that bridge, and construct the taller, longer bridge to create that capacity that isn't, isn't there now, so, in, in, as a result of that, in two thousand sixteen, council awarded a, a professional services contract, again, for an application to FEMA, another application to FEMA, this one was a conditional LOMER, a conditional Letter of Map, Map Revision, and the reason it's called conditional is, is you go through the process to apply and show the hydrology that everything works, and then, based on a couple changes, some of those changes are the projects that I mentioned that were completed, and in this case, it included the removal of that bridge, that application was submitted and approved by FEMA, so essentially paved the way for revising this map, once we remove that bridge and build a taller, longer bridge that had the, the capacity to, to convey the storm flows on Wilson Creek, so, the, that process, that project to remove that bridge, staff, or the city is proposing to complete that in two phases, phase one is currently underway, and that included the, the building, the taller, longer bridge, and, phase two, which will be out to bid with in January, includes removing, removing the existing bridge, and moving the utilities from the existing bridge to the taller bridge, and there, and at that point, we'll be able to make this submittal to FEMA, showing that we've removed the bridge, so now, we can apply for, to amend the map once again, and, we're, we're, the slide here, this next slide here, kinda, it shows the, what we believe the floodway and the floodplain will look like, once the bridge is removed, you can see that the bottleneck will be removed from the map, and, in this, in this map here, you can see that the entire floodway will be contained within the Wilson, Wilson Creek Channel, from Ucaipa Boulevard all the way down past the I-ten freeway, we're, in, in some of the preliminary work that we've done, we, we, it shows that about seven properties will be removed from the floodway, that, the dark blue area, and over fifteen, maybe up to twenty, properties will be removed from the light blue floodplain area, again, benefiting those, those, those properties, there are a lot of other benefits that, from removing these properties from the FEMA-designated floodway and floodplain, as I mentioned, the, the, doing away with the flood insurance premiums, and allowing the properties to be further developed, but also, it also creates economic development opportunities for, for, for the city, and for these, the, the, these properties, there are several private and public projects that have benefited from this process, some of these slides, the, here that you'll see are those projects, this is the Ucaipa Gateway Project, the AMPM fuel station, and the La Quinta Hotel that is currently under construction, and then this is another fuel station and hotel project that was approved at the Planning Commission meeting last week, this one is proposed along Oakland Road at Colorado Street, and the Dunlap Park, which we have the plans for, and we're seeking, we're trying to fully fund the construction of this park through grant funding and other partnerships, this is, this is a public project that has benefited from removing properties from the floodplain, and on this map here, going back to, to the two thousand eight FEMA map, those red dots represent the, these projects that I just mentioned, the Gateway Project, the, another, third hotel project that is currently being discussed, this is the Chevron and Hotel Project that was approved at Planning Commission last week, and this is the location for the proposed Dunlap Park. On this slide here is the Woodside Homes Project, or, and the Wilson Three Basin Project here, this is Oakland Road and Bryant, this is another project, a public and private project that has benefited from the, the process, the LOMER application to FEMA was submitted by Woodside Homes for their project here, which removed the east side of their project site from the flood, the floodplain, and, as council's aware, that's a hundred and forty-four lot subdivision that was made possible by the Oakland Creek specific plan the council approved, and the construction of the, the Wilson Three Basin, which is currently being constructed to the south of that red box. So, for the proposed professional engineering services contract, staff publicly advertised and distributed a request for proposals and requests for qualifications, three qualification, or five qualifications, submittals were received from various engineering firms, and based on the city's qualifications-based process, Webb and Associates was determined to be the most qualified to complete the LOMER effort, the fiscal impact information table on page four thirty-four of the agenda identifies that there is suffici- sufficient funding available in the approved project budget for the proposed contract, and I do wanna mention one other, other thing, going back to the Gateway La Quinta Hotel Project, I mentioned that one of the benefits is the economic development opportunities from a project like that, and staff estimates that, that that project itself, once it's, once it's built, it will provide over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year to the city's general fund, in sales tax, property tax, and also the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax resulting from that project. And with that, staff's recommendation is that city council award and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Webb and Associates in the amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the, the, the professional engineering services, also authorize a contract contingency of six thousand dollars and five thousand dollars for staff time, and contract administration for a total budget of sixty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty for this process, and the third recommendation is that city council authorize the city manager, or is designated to administer the terms of the contract, and with that, that concludes my report, and staff is available for questions.
Thanks, sir, any questions of staff?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, at this point, we move on to announcements, are there any announcements?
Nope. It's, we also have successor agency and housing authority, both minutes and reorg, and.
So do we adjourn the city council to do that first?
Yes, please. Adjourn it to the, and then you'll have to vote on the minutes, and, and the two new council members are free to vote on the minutes, or they may certainly abstain, since they weren't here for those actions, and then move on to selecting the chair and vice chair.
So, in the absence of the chairperson, so, I guess I'll adjourn.
John is chair, isn't he?
No, I'm vice, but you'll adjourn the.
I'll adjourn the city council meeting.
And I will, uh, call to order the six, the.
Successor agency.
There we go. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And two abstentions, I take it, for the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'll adjourn Successor Agency Committee.
Do you wanna do the reorg for the successor agency first?
Oh, you wanna do the reorder? Okay.
Yes, I'll take that if you're okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so like the mayor and mayor pro tem, we're gonna do the same thing, so we're just, at this time, I'm gonna open the nominations for the office of chairperson for the successor agency, do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Matt Garner for the chairperson of the successor agency.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the nominations, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'll open the nominations for the vice chairperson. Vice chair, anybody?
I'll nominate Chris Venable for vice chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Okay, nomination period. Okay, nomination period closed. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now I'll adjourn, yeah. The successor-
With the adjournment of the successor agency, I'll go ahead and call to order the Housing Authority. The first item on our agenda with, for the Housing Authority is the approved amendments of October 24th.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have two abstentions. Councilmember Venable and Garner will abstain. And, uh, that brings us, go ahead. You're up.
Okay, so same thing, Housing Authority. I'll open the nominations for the chairperson.
I nominate Councilman Venable.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. I'll open the nominations for office of chairperson.
I'll nominate-
Or vice chair, sorry.
I'll nominate Matt Garner.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
And with that, I'll adjourn the Housing Authority and can-
I'll reconvene the City Council meeting. Looks like we're moving on to announcements. Is there any announcements from the City Council?
Just that the, uh, Christmas parade was fantastic. I, uh, I told these two new guys that the best part of this job is to see all those faces, all those kids, uh, and along the Boulevard. They just, they just lived for it. It was fantastic. And this year, we were throwing popcorn balls. I, I was worried somebody was gonna get in the head, get hit in the head with a popcorn ball.
Yeah, I, I'd like to echo, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Duncan's sentiment. Uh, shout out, huge shout out to the Ucaipa Rotary, uh, for putting that on. That is no small, small, small task, and they knocked it out of the park. So phenomenal job. Truly see a community coming out and, and enjoying, uh, a Christmas parade is, is phenomenal. I also want to congratulate our two newest, uh, city councilmen and, and chairpersons and vice chairpersons for our two, uh, agencies. Congratulations. Welcome to it. This is a very important, uh, uh, job that we have to help guide the city. I think, uh, Councilman Boggs said it best. He, it is our job to, uh, protect the city and make it a place that our children would want to live, uh, when they have children of their own. So, um, that is all. Any further announcements?
Nope.
All right, at this time, I'd like to, uh, adjourn, adjourn the City Council meeting of December 12th, 2022.
You got to walk right into some of that stuff, didn't you? Ooh, we didn't warn you about that. That's something hard.